The regular monthly meeting of the town of Fairfield on October 24, 2022. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Are there any announcements regarding new membership first? Pam Iacono, District Eight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to welcome Cameron Cheniski from District Eight and Brooks Sparachino from District Ten.
Representative Zesma.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. I would like to announce and welcome Jennifer Barahona, who is now a member of District Five.
Welcome to our new members.
Ed Bateson. Marty Fury. Melissa Longo. Amy Ruggero. Bill Gerber. Karen McCormick. Cindy Perom. Jeff Steele. Alex Durrell. Jeff Galdenzi. Tom Lambert.
Here.
Sharon Pastilli.
Here.
Laura Carson.
Here.
Michelle McCabe. Marcy Spolier. Liz Zesma. Jennifer Barahona. Josh Garskoff. Joe Seibert. Jay Walk. Steve Barrettts. Hannah Gale. Andrew Graceffa. Lisa Havy. John Kuhn. Mark McDermott. Jill Vergara. Karen Wackerman. Cameron Cheniski. Hank Ferens. Pamela Iacono. Jim Myers. Christine Brown. Drew Giorgiattis. Margaret Horton. Kelly Sinto. Ken Astorita. Peter Britton. Brooks Sparachino. Story Tolman. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Could we all please rise for the pledge? Flag is behind us. Okay, before we get to the consent calendar that we have several items on, I need a motion to split item number five. To hear, consider, and act upon the following appointments to the Fair TV Commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. William B. Ferguson, Republican, 12 Reynolds Drive, term July 22 to 2024. Ann Marie Legnisse, Republican, 60 Steep Hill Road, term July 2020 to 2023, to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Patrick G. Colligan, Republican. Can I get a motion to split that? Representative Zesma seconded. Representative Iacono. We'll take that to a vote. All in favor? Great. All right, so we'll get to the consent calendar. On the consent calendar is item number three, the Nancy Billington reappointment. Item number eight, Roger Sherman partial roof replacement. Item number nine, Riverfield partial roof replacement. Item number 10, for the air conditioning at North Stratfield. Item number 11, the air conditioning at Osborne Hill. Item number 12, air conditioning at Fairfield Woods Middle School. Item number 13, the Fitz RTU replacement at Fairfield Ward High School. And item number 14, the roof replacement projects at Sherman and Riverfield. Can I get a motion to approve? Representative Iacono, seconded by Representative Havy. Is there any further discussion? Representative Vergara? Sorry, sorry. Correct. I did not flip the page. Representative Iacono? Okay, that's why I left it off the first time. Okay. So, all those in favor of those items excluding number 19, the ordinance on the turf? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Get my papers in order here. Okay, item number four, to hear, consider, and act upon the following appointment to the Ethics Commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. William A. Diaz III, Democrat, 49 Melville Avenue, term July 2022 to 2024. We did not... Can I get a motion to approve? Representative Wackerman, seconded by Representative Perom. We did not hear from Mr. Diaz last week. He is here tonight to speak with us, so welcome, Will.
Hey, everyone. Just want to thank you all for considering me for this position on the commission. The position aligns with the work I do. I work for the School of Social Work at UConn, and I do training for the Department of Social Services, including an Ethics 101 course. It's a commission that aligns with my values, so I think a good and healthy government deserves to have some checks and balances. So, any questions, I'll take them.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Diaz? Representative Iacono?
I don't know who bought these microphones, but they are fired. Thank you, Pamela Iacono, District Eight. Mr. Diaz, thank you very much for being here this evening. So, you have told us that this aligns with what you do for a living, but what really made you decide to apply for the position?
So, one of the reasons I had stepped down from the RTM, there was a lot of other things that are going on in my life, but I wanted to maintain a connection to the local government, and this seemed like a position that kind of aligned with what my values are, and so I thought, let's give this a shot, and so I'm here.
Thank you. Also, on your application, it says that you heard about the opening from a board member and that you spoke with other board members. Can you please let us know who those people were, who you heard it from, and who you spoke with?
It was Liz Zesma who sort of let me know about the position that it was open, and I had spoken to a couple of other members. I'm trying to remember. I spoke to Josh Garskoff, and I don't remember the other person I spoke to about it, but that was how I heard about the position.
Thank you. Typically, that question, and I can understand why there might be confusion, means that you reach out to the actual commission members to find out about roles and responsibilities and what expectations are. And I did call each one of the commissioners, and obviously, they all answered that none of them had spoken with you, so thank you for answering that. Clearly, there was probably just a little bit of confusion there, I'm guessing, on your end on what that question meant. Okay, thank you. I have no further comments. I don't know if anyone else has any comments, but I'll follow up after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Iacono. Representative Zesma?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to, first of all, thank Will Diaz for his work on this body, his body of public service, and the, you know, mission that you seem to follow in your life, and I think you are the absolute perfect candidate for a board like this, and I'm very happy that you stepped forward and agreed to apply. So, I will be wholeheartedly supporting you, and I hope my colleagues will do that as well.
Thank you, Representative Zesma. Representative Giorgiattis?
Drew Giorgiattis, District Nine. I... When you appoint someone to a commission, you're looking for qualifications, and you want to make sure that there are no conflicts of interest, knowing Will, knowing his background, knowing the kind of work he does. He is absolutely 100% qualified for this position, and as we've discussed at the RTM here over and over again, it's so difficult to find people, A, number one, to step up to volunteer, and number two, to find someone who is absolutely highly qualified for that specific commission. So, I feel really lucky tonight that Will is, after giving his time to the RTM, is willing to stay on and continue to volunteer for his town and, you know, share his professional knowledge, which hopefully will help all of us. I know there's a lot of talk about transparency, about civility, and that's why this Ethics Board is that much more important now than ever, so I wholly support Will Diaz, our highly qualified candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Giorgiattis. Any other comments from the body or questions? Representative Barahona?
Representative Barahona, District Five. As will your replacement, Will, just want to say I have big shoes to fill here, and I've known Will since we both were on the PTA at McKinley, so that was a long time ago. Met him, and he has always been a man of utmost integrity, and I have such respect for you, and I can't think of a better person to serve on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Barahona. Any other... Representative McCabe?
Representative McCabe, District Four. I just want to say thank you to Will Diaz for stepping up and to just reiterate that we're lucky to have you, especially given the fact that you have actual professional experience in ethics, in teaching ethics, and as was remarked, it's hard to find people to volunteer in general, and to have someone that actually has this kind of professional experience is really lucky for us and for the town, so I thank you.
Thank you, Representative McCabe. Any other questions or comments from the body? Representative Iacono?
Pamela Iacono, District Eight. I stand before you today to tell you that I cannot support this nomination at this time. The reason being is that I don't think there's been enough space and distance between resigning from a political caucus and being assigned to a position on the Ethics Commission. In fact, I feel so strongly about it that I really think that this body ought to consider legislation that prohibits that from happening. That's nothing to say that I don't think that Mr. Diaz should reapply in a year and be considered again. I just don't think that it's sending a very good message that we're having, quote-unquote, "one of our own" resign and immediately go on to hear ethics complaints. I really do think that there needs to be space, time, and difference there. In fact, there's a webinar that CCM does. It's called Ethics, Accountability, and Conflicts of Interest. We all received notice of it, and were able to attend if we so choose, and in fact, it would be my recommendation to the moderator that he recommends that everybody listen to this seminar. It was held on September 6, 2022. The purpose of Ethics Rules are outlined. It goes through conflicts of interest. It also lists best practices, and in its best practices, it gives an example of what are good practices. And in the best practice recommendations taken from the New Britain Ethics Board is that no one appointed to the Ethics Commission shall hold office in any political party or political committee, or have held public office, or have been a candidate for public office for a one-year period prior to appointment. So, for these reasons, I am uncomfortable appointing someone who is directly resigning from a political organization, the legislative body, to go on the Ethics Commission, and I can't support this at this time. It doesn't mean that if Mr. Diaz's name was put forward in the future that I wouldn't absolutely reconsider it. I would, but I just think the timing of this is, quite frankly, inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Iacono. Representative Zesma?
Representative Zesma, District Four. I don't think Mr. Diaz would mind if I shared with the rest of you that one of the reasons he stepped down from the RTM centers on the matter of the resolution that we brought forth that racism is a public health crisis, identical to what 28 other towns did, and in response to the racial equity justice and task force blueprint recommendation. It became, "Everyone deserves a trophy," and Mr. Diaz, the only member of this caucus who is a person of color, really did not feel welcome. So, that is the reason that he stepped down. But I will take Ms. Iacono's words to heart and say we should also be extremely diligent about members of this body sitting on other commissions where there are clear conflicts of interest. So, I look forward to reviewing with a fine-tooth comb any future opportunity where that conflict arises and do everything I can to apply the same standard. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Zesma. Representative Gerber?
Hi, Bill Gerber, District Two. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Representative Zesma. When did you first become aware of Representative Iacono's issues with having someone who just stepped down become a member of the Ethics Commission? You were never made aware of it, so Ms. Iacono, wait until tonight to make... Even though... Oh, I just want to make sure I understand. You just brought this up for the first time tonight. Okay, it would have been raised had he been present. And I agree, this is something we should look at. I think it's pretty unusual to do this on the night that the person is being appointed if you have, you know, respect for that person. So, in the future, we might want to look at this. It's not an unreasonable request. I just think it's unreasonable to do this tonight for someone who's really, really qualified for this job. Knowing Mr. Diaz, not a very political person, he's pretty friends with people all over the political spectrum, and I would say we should... I'd like to echo Representative Zesma said, "We had a member of this body on the Charter Review Commission." That was unappropriate. It was really, really inappropriate, and so I think we should look at all... That wasn't personal. I'm talking about, we shouldn't have members... It's inappropriate? Okay. We should look at who is on this board, on this body, and ensure that in the future they aren't conflicted on other boards or commissions, regardless of how, you know, you might interpret the laws. I mean, there are things that are right, there are things that are wrong morally, and I think this... I have no moral issue with this person in particular, given the fact that he's never really exhibited any extreme political behavior or upset anyone here.
Thank you, Representative Gerber. Representative McCormick?
Karen McCormick, District Two. I do take issue with the comments that we waited, or someone waited till tonight to point out the issues that the member had with bringing this issue before the body tonight, in that we did not have an opportunity last week to even discuss the item on the agenda. This is the first time we've had the opportunity to discuss this item, and I think it's highly inappropriate to question why someone would have waited when the item was not even brought forth on the agenda last week. That's the first issue. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask the town attorney if there were any other applicants, any other submissions of interested parties to fill the opening on the Ethics Commission.
The question is whether I'm knowledgeable if there were any other applications submitted. I simply don't have the answer to that. I'm not involved in the application process to boards and commissions in general unless there's a legal issue concerning one of the applicants or the process.
Have a second. Representative Perom? All is in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Aye. No.
Ed Bateson?
Calling the question.
Marty Fury? Melissa Longo? I'm sorry, I can't hear. Amy Ruggero? Bill Gerber? Karen McCormick? Cindy Perom? Jeff Steele? Jeff Galdenzi? Tom Lambert?
Yes.
Sharon Pastilli?
Sharon, write it in the chat. We'll come out... We'll just write it down.
We can't hear, Mr. Moderator?
We're calling the question. This is what the vote is for right now.
Yeah, but I can't even hear when I'm supposed to vote.
We're calling for the vote. Yes or no?
Yes, I'm just saying, we can't hear when it's our turn to vote, so Mr. Moderator might want to say to the mic when it's our turn to vote.
The clerk is calling the roll, not me.
Laura Carson?
Yes.
Michelle McCabe? Marcy Spolier? Liz Zesma? Jennifer Barahona? Joe Seibert? Jay Walk? Steve Barrettts? Hannah Gale? Andrew Graceffa? Lisa Havy? John Kuhn? Mark McDermott? Jill Vergara? Karen Wackerman? Cameron Cheniski? Hank Ferens? Pamela Iacono? Jim Myers? Christine Brown? Drew Giorgiattis? Margaret Horton? I'm sorry, was that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Thank you. Kelly Sinto? Ken Astorita? Peter Britton? Brooks Sparachino? Story Tolman?
All right, that's 30... That was a waste of time, because you guys got to speak up next time. All right, the question is in front of us. We have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Diaz. Do I have... We're going to go to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Maybe keep your hands up. Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Diaz, and good luck in your new position. Okay, item number five, to hear, consider, and act upon the following appointments to the Fair TV Commission, or appointment to the Fair TV Commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Ann Marie Legnisse, Republican, 60 Steep Hill Road, term July 2020 to 2023, to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Patrick G. Colligan, Republican. Can I have a motion to approve? Representative McCormick, second. Representative Ferens? I don't see her here tonight. I don't see her online. Does anybody have any comments about this appointment? Representative Perom?
Representative Perom, District Two. I was wondering if you knew, Attorney... If you had any idea how many applicants had applied for this particular opening for the commission for this position?
I don't think he knows.
Well, I didn't know if this is a whole separate... This is a whole separate subject.
It's all the same, I think. It's through the first selectman on the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Representative Gerber?
Bill Gerber, District Two. Had Ann Marie been here, I was going to ask her if she had any, like, vision for what Fair, what she'd like Fair TV to look like. Is, was she invited to come tonight?
She said she was available tonight, so.
Okay. I mean, my, my concern about this position, and I, and I voiced this at some length in our, in our committee meetings, I don't think I've come across for this commission a ca, a candidate that really didn't have any, either, like, media, any legal, any finance, like, you know, serious financial experience. I went back and looked at all the candidates in recent years, and they all pretty much had significant media experience, legal experience, or financial experience. So, I, I, this is a small board. It's, I mean, a small commission. There's only five members. So every member is, is going to be asked to contribute a lot. And I would have preferred someone that, you know, could have either contributed to the legal aspect of things, because there are a lot of legal issues, or maybe helped get grants and things like that. Ms. Legnies has great experience, but it's not relevant to this commission, and I would have liked to see her start on another commission where there might be more members. And I, I, you know, I don't believe she has been on any other commission, so this is like a really tough one to, to start with. And she's going to be called on to contribute through, from day one, and I, I think the learning curve is going to be too steep. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gerber. Representative Giorgiades?
Drew Giorgiades, District Nine. I was unable to attend the committee meeting last week, which obviously is a prep for tonight, which is one of the requirements of our service, that we attend our TAM meetings. I'm disappointed she's not here. I had some questions about why she was interested, given that her background and qualifications don't really mesh. So I'm, I, I'm sort of troubled that I, she's not here when she said she would be, and I can't ask her the questions that would have made me support her. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Giorgiades. Any other comments? Representative Astorita?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ken Astorita, District Ten. Based on what I just heard, I would just like to say that I myself would not be qualified for this position, and I'm guessing most of the people in this room would not be either, because they're probably not attorneys, financial experts, or involved in the media. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Astorita. Representative Steele?
Jeff Steele, District Two. She has a Bachelor's of Science in Journalism. That's pretty qualified. I mean, we're not talking about, she's going to work at CNN. I, I, we're trying to find people to serve. This isn't a political position. This is simple. She wants to serve. She seemed excited. She seems qualified. So what if she worked at Cumberland Farms? So what if she worked at Home Depot? So what? She can do it.
Thank you, Representative Steele. Any other comments from the body? Representative McCormick?
Karen McCormick, District Two. I, too, would echo the comments of Representative Steele. This is a woman who showed up last week. She submitted herself to questions from the body. I don't recall her being told she needed to return this evening to be subjected to additional questioning. And I think a bachelor's, to me, seems sufficient to serve on that particular board. And one of the comments that she made that I felt was most compelling was that she's excited to serve on this board, so that she can make sure that the citizens and the townspeople in Fairfield have access to the broadcast to bring government to them and the other activities that Fair TV brings to the citizens. So that, to me, in conjunction with her resume, quite frankly, was very compelling. And for all those reasons, I'm going to support her, and I urge everyone in this body to support her as well.
Just to be clear, Representative McCormick, she wasn't not asked to come back tonight. And when the town clerk sent out the email, she was honored to be attended tonight. Okay? Anybody else? Representative Zesma?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Liz Zesma, District Four. That was my question. And I will say that no one has mentioned anything in particular in her background, in her work history. But I would say tonight, I'm a little bit disturbed that somebody who is eager to work for us and wants to show their resolve to do that is not here. Unless she was not properly informed, which I don't believe is the case. So I'm a little troubled by that. I want volunteers who have a passion to work for this town to be here for this meeting, so that we can be assured that they will be there to perform their duties.
Thank you, Representative, Representative Zesma. Any other comments from the body? Representative Iacono?
Pamela Iacono, District Eight. Mr. Moderator, procedurally speaking, was it, was the candidate specifically told that there were follow-up questions? It has been typically our past practice, that when people appear before us in a presentation, that they typically don't have to come back. Was she specifically told to be here, to, to be here tonight? Because there may have been a misunderstanding. I don't want to speak about her, but based on past practice, that has been our experience.
She wasn't told not to come back this week. So, you can take it however you want to take it.
No, just a follow-up to say, so she, she was told that she needed to be there for presentations. She was on for here. She was at presentation. She didn't make it back here. Mr. Ferguson didn't either. Lots of people didn't. People missed the committee Q and A, and they were now put on, because they made it to this meeting. So, you know, we need to be consistent in what we're doing, and I can understand how there would have been a mixed message about that. To have that be held against somebody is, in my opinion, inappropriate. And perhaps if that's the big hang-up, and people want to get further clarification, they could just postpone this till she's here the next time. But, you know, I'll leave that all to the people that don't want her to serve. And I do also just want to echo. Excuse me. I do just want to also point out that, I want to echo what Representative McCormick said. This woman had such genuine enthusiasm about serving the town. And it is incredibly, to echo the words of my fellow colleagues on the other side of the aisle, it's so difficult to find good people, and here we have somebody really willing to step up in a position that's quite difficult to fill. So, I will be supporting her. Thank you.
Thank you, Representatives Iacono. Any other comments from the body? Nobody on WebEx? Okay. Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All is in favor? Opposed? Representative Kuhn is abstaining. Okay, that motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item number six, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolved that in accordance with the recommendation from the WPCA, additional funding of up to three hundred thousand dollars from the WPCA fund balance for the design of the Center Street Pump Station, including the Force Main B, and hereby is approved. This was approved by the Board of Finance. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Vergara, seconded by Representative Seibert. Are there any further discussions or questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. We'll take it to a vote. All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolved that in accordance with the recommendation for the WPCA, additional funding of up to three hundred thousand dollars from the WPCA fund balance for the design of the South Pine Creek Pump Station and Force Main B, and hereby is approved. This was approved by the Board of Finance at their ten eighteen meeting. Can I have a motion to approve? Representative Ruggero and Representative Gale. Any further discussions on that item? Okay, seeing none. We'll take the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we should be at item number fifteen, right? That's, okay. Item number fifteen, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance, whereas the town of Fairfield, the town is ending the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two fiscal year with approx, with an approximate twelve million dollar operating fund surplus, the surplus. And whereas three point six million of the surplus amount is related to actual expenditures that were less than the amount of expenditures budgeted spending surplus. And whereas eight million four hundred thousand dollars of the surplus is related to actual revenue receipts that exceed the amount of budgeted revenue, revenue surplus. And whereas the town continues to be confronted with the impact of fill pile contamination-related costs, which projected to greatly exceed the amount of the revenue surplus, now therefore be it resolved that the town hereby authorizes, approves, and directs the transfer of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two revenue surplus to the fill pile remediation account as follows. Increase current year levy two million, account oh one oh eight oh dash four thousand. Increase prior year levy three million oh one oh eight oh four thousand, four, four zero zero ten. Increase interest on delinquent taxes, two and a half million, zero one zero eight zero four zero zero two zero. Increase town clerk conveyance, nine hundred thousand, zero one zero zero one dash four two three one two. Increase transfer out CNR remediation account, eight million four hundred thousand, account zero one zero one one zero one zero five eight nine five zero. This was approved by the Board of Finance at their ten eighteen meeting. Can I have a motion to approve? Representative Wackerman, seconded by Representative Zesma. Is there any further discussion on this item? Representative Barris?
Steve Barrettts, District Six. I just wanted a little bit of clarification on some of this. Last week at the committee meetings, the eight million that was going to be put into this account, everyone was talking about it being for remediation of Penfield. Now, a couple months back, the first selectwoman, the first selectwoman mentioned that the remediation for the fill pile at Penfield was only going to be about two million. So I was wondering the exact breakdown of that eight million, and maybe whoever here can answer that question?
Mr. Schmidt, you're on WebEx with us tonight?
Yes, I'm on WebEx. I couldn't he, I couldn't hear the whole question. Could you repeat the question and speak into the microphone?
Yeah, my bad on that. So, the eight million that was put into the count, there was all the discussion last week at the committee meeting, being that, that eight million would be for remediation of Penfield. Couple months back, the first selectwoman mentioned to us that the remediation for the fill pile at Penfield was only going to be about two million. So I was wondering the exact breakdown of that eight million, and was it all designated for Penfield or for other projects as well? If, just some clarity on that would be a great help to me.
Sure. The, so the answer is that the, the exact breakout of how that money is going to be spent hasn't been determined yet. The remediation account is the, it's just kind of, that's the name of the account that the money would go into, and it's just to hold that money in abeyance until a future date, when we come, come forward with a proposal about how that money would be split up. So that, it hasn't been determined yet, but this would, this kind of holds that money in, in, in reserve off to the side until such time as we have a, a proposal for how it would be split up.
Now, would it be split up for different parts of the Penfield project, or split up on various different projects throughout the town?
It's, it's not totally known right now. I would say most likely. It's most likely that it would be split up between Penfield construction, Penfield remediation, and remediation of other sites around the town.
So it would include Penfield construction, which really has nothing to do with the fill pile remediation, correct?
It could. But there would have to be another vote before that, before that happens.
So, another vote by this body, as well as other bodies, to make certain that that money, so, I mean, I'm just kind of confused, if, if it's a fill pile remediation that we're talking about, that other Penfield money should not really be included in there. Am I wrong?
Can you restate the question?
Since this account is for fill pile remediation, the construction money at Penfield, which is, doesn't have anything to do with the fill pile, I'm, I'm confused why that's included in that account as referred to fill pile remediation.
It's just an account where we're holding the money until we come forward with another proposal.
So it's poorly named, the account?
For how that money would be spent.
So that account is.
By you making this decision tonight to hold this in abeyance, we can't spend that money on, on Penfield construction.
You cannot. That, so just make very clear, that money cannot be spent on Penfield construction without our approval down the line.
Not without another vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Barris. Representative Kuhn?
Representative Kuhn, District Seven, question, follow-up question for Mr. Schmidt. I don't know that it's GAAP rules for the accounting. I know there's some generally accepted accounting. Is that the right way to account for this reserve?
It's what we've done in the past, with money that we want to hold in, in abeyance, to put that into that account.
And are you able to, regardless of how you And are you able to, regardless of how you may use it, in... At some point in time to rejigger the accounting, figure out which other accounts maybe it should go to?
I'm sorry, I can't hear the question.
The question is, you've got this reserve of $8 million, right? And so at some point, you're going to have to allocate that to other accounts. So is this a way to just do kind of a catch-all for now and then to allocate it to wherever you wish in the future?
It's a way to reserve it for future use, not for us to use in whatever way we deem to be right. It would be, again, it would have to be a vote.
If you switch the reserves or if you use the expenditure for something different?
I don't understand the question.
Whether it's an accounting manipulation or a cash change?
I'm not sure how else to say this. This would hold the money in advance so that we...
Well, all right. I'll...
And it's consistent with what we've done within the past to hold it in this account until we are ready to spend it and come forth with a proposal.
So that $8 million will stay in the account and will not leave the account until there's approval from us?
You got cut off again. I'm sorry.
You have $8 million in an account, correct?
8.4 million would go into the account.
And in order for anything to come out of that other than what is stipulated for the remediation of fill pile, you'll have to come back to us?
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you, Representative Kuhn. Representative Georgiades?
Drew Georgiades, District 9. Follow-up question for you, Mr. Schmidt. You said that traditionally in the past, you have kept money in a remediation account. I've been on this board or on the RTM for over four...
You're getting cut off, Representative.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My point... My question to you is, you said that you have held the money in a remediation account historically or in the past. I've been on this board for four terms. We have never in my... You know, certainly not more than in the past three years had a remediation account. Most of the money would go into fund balance or another kind of account. So the fact that you have an additional $6 million in a remediation account, can you explain to me, please, why it's in a remediation account and not in just a general fund that's holding the money?
Because we are... So the plan would be in the future to probably use some of that for remediation or for construction of Penfield. And there have been, I believe, three or four other occasions where money has gone into this account in the past.
Can you define "past" for me? Because remediation account is specifically for remediation and I don't think there's a historical precedent for an account that's holding a very large amount of money to be under something called remediation when probably 80% of it will not be used for remediation.
So your question was, in the past? So how do I define the past? The past was, I believe, it started in 2019.
So three years, yes. So please answer my question. Why is it in a fund called remediation and not just a general fund, balance, or holding account? Why did you name it that?
Because that's the... You know, that was the account that was created by the Board of Finance back when it was first established. And money that was going to be used for remediation went into the account. And we know that... We're fairly certain that, and almost positive, that at least a portion of it will go toward remediation.
In your best estimate, what proportion will go to remediation?
I don't know the answer to that right now. I know that next month, there will be a presentation by the administration to give some more clarity as to how much funding will be needed and possibly make a request for how this money would be divvied up.
So if we take the first select woman's estimation of $2 million for remediation and there's $8 million in the account, approximately 25% of this account labeled remediation will go to remediation. We can estimate that?
Can you repeat that?
If the first select woman estimated $2 million in remediation needs and you're putting $8 million into this fund, then 25% of the monies in the fund labeled remediation will go to remediation. And the 75% balance will go to other things, not remediation.
Well, the total remediation required would be between $4 and $5 million for Penfield alone. We've got about another... I believe the estimate is about $3 million for other sites around the town. And then the amount for the fill pile itself is estimated, and this is very tentative. It is estimated at about $7 million.
Thank you.
Anybody else besides Mr. Kuhn? Representative Astorita?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ken Astorita, District 10. Just a question for Mr. Schmidt. Isn't the purpose of having a remediation account, in essence, to cover costs that you don't actually know at this particular moment? Is that not the reason?
Sorry, Representative, you're getting cut off.
Yeah, is the purpose of having a remediation account basically to cover costs that are not knowable at the moment or not completely knowable?
Yes. Yes, that aren't knowable. And we haven't determined how the money... How exactly the money would be... You know, our plan would be to come to you guys with a proposal for financing all of the remediation. And so we haven't finalized that plan yet. And as I mentioned, next month, we'll have a better sense of that. At which time, we'll come to you with a more broken-out proposal divvied up between the different areas, including, you know, Penfield remediation, remediation of other town sites, you know, the fill pile itself, the burn, and also for Penfield Construction.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to say that I intend to support this, but I really think it's pathetic that this is something that we have to do because of the mismanagement from the previous administration for this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Astorita. Representative Kuhn?
Representative Kuhn, District 7. Follow-up. I believe, just to clarify, on reserve accounts, there are typically fairly exacting rules as to how you set those up. But what I would like to know is, it sounds to me from what you're saying that there's a cash fund setup. Is there a restricted cash account that offsets this? Jared, Mr. Schmidt, did you hear the question?
No, I'm sorry, you got cut off.
Okay. The question really to you was, you mentioned something to the effect of there was cash set aside or an account set aside, which makes me wonder, have we set aside cash in a restricted cash account to offset this liability?
This is a capital non-recurring budget account.
Okay. So it's... There's no restricted account... Restricted cash account to offset this. I guess I misunderstood what you were saying before. Okay, thank you.
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Representative Kuhn. Representative Gerber?
Yeah, thank you, Bill Gerber, District 2. I'd like to echo what Representative Astorita said. Really, such mismanagement by the prior administration is really upsetting. So thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gerber. Any other comments or questions on this item? Jared, I just have a question. How much... What is the balance of the current remediation account?
I would have to double-check. The last time I saw it, it was at about $6.5 million.
And did that include the $1 million of opera money? Which some has been spent, I know.
No. It would not include that.
Okay, so $6.5 million approximately?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Representative Iacona?
Pamela Iacona, District 8. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Schmidt, the Board of Finance established this committee... I mean, this account, did it not?
Yes, it did.
The Board of Finance, did it unanimously approve moving these funds into that account?
Yes. From my recollection, yes, they did. I can't say whether or not they were all present at the time, but the ones...
The members that were present voted unanimously for the... I personally was waiting to hear the discussion from the Board of Finance because this is a revenue item and they deal with our financing. And that's a great place to get our recommendations from. And I would encourage all members to watch Board of Finance meetings and follow what I call the bouncing ball so that you understand how all the accounting works, why the accounts are set up the way that they are, and what is before us, who's allowed to make transfers, who's allowed to be required for approvals. I certainly lean on them for their expertise in what their roles and responsibilities are, not only by the charter but by state statute. So I will be supporting this now, knowing that they had that full-on discussion. And I appreciate that conversation. I also encourage people to send in their questions ahead of time so that they can get detailed answers. We used to do that here. For some reason, that practice stopped. So thank you, I will be supporting it. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for being here this evening. And thank you to the Board of Finance for giving us their recommendations.
Thank you, Representative Iacona. Any other questions from the body? Nothing on WebEx? Okay, we'll take this item to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Representative Vergara? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries? Okay, item number 16. To here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolved that the bond resolution entitled the resolution... Resolution appropriating $24,800,000 for the costs related to the uses of Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund specified in Exhibit A to reduce the appropriation to $22,640,000 and revise certain uses of funds in the project list as reflected in the attached amended Exhibit A. B, and hereby is approved. The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance both approved this item at their meetings. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Wakerman, seconded by Representative Seibert. Thank you. Any comments on this item? Questions? See a lot of blank stares. So I'm assuming no? Okay, we'll take it to a vote. All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Great, motion carries unanimously. Item number 17 failed at the Board of Finance, the $100,000 for the tennis court, so we don't have to take that one up tonight. Item number 18. To consider and act upon an ordinance creating an arts commission sponsored by Jeff Steele, District 2; Sharon Bastilli, District 3; Marcy Spolier, District 4; Hannah Gale, District 6; Jill Vergara, District 7; and Karen Wakerman, District 7. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Zesma, seconded by Representative Rogiro. Any comments or questions on this item? Representative Wakerman?
Karen Wakerman, District 7. I just have an amendment to propose. Betsy, I did email this to you. I don't have a paper version, I'm sorry. This is in the section that's called Membership Terms and Compensation. In first paragraph, the last sentence, I propose that it be changed to read, "The membership of the commission should include at least one representative from each of the following or such other organizations as shall be approved by the DECD." And the reason for that is that we need to have electors who are on the commission and it may be difficult to get Fairfield electors to be members of those specific organizations that the DECD looks for. And the DECD has indicated that they're flexible about this, so just trying to add a little flexibility in forming the commission. So I move to amend to make that change.
Representative Iacona? Thank you. Do I need to read the amendment again or does everybody go with that? Okay. So we'll take it to a vote. All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The amended to the... Amendment to the ordinance carries unanimously. Okay, any other comments? We'll just see. Thank you, Attorney Baldwin. I think we have further amendment? Thank you.
I'd like to propose another amendment. Thanks to Attorney Baldwin, who caught this. The proposed amendment in the very last section says that the commission will present an annual report in March of the year. And Mr. Baldwin pointed out that that's budget season, so we'd like to change that to January. So it would just be changing the word "March" to "January."
Seconded by Representative Iacona? We'll take that to a vote. All is in favor of that amendment? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That amended, amendment carries unanimously. All right, we ready to get to a vote? No other comments? Questions? Okay, all those in favor? As amended? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Fantastic. That motion carries unanimously. This is great for the town. Okay, item number nineteen. To consider and act upon an ordinance prohibiting the use of artificial turf containing rubber infill sponsored by Cindy Param, District Two, Jeff Caldenzi, District Three, Sharon Pastily, District Three, Laura Carson, District Four, Will Diaz, formerly District Five, Hannah Gale, District Six, Andrew Grisaffa, District Six, Mark McDermott, District Six, Jill Vergara, District Seven, sorry, Jill Vergara, District Seven, Christine Brown, District Nine, and Drew Georgiades, District Nine, do have a motion to approve. Representative Grisaffa, seconded by Representative Agar. Are there any questions or comments? Representative Iacono?
Thank you, Pam Iacona, District Eight. I support the amendment. I just wondering procedurally, is it, should it be appropriate to delete just Will Diaz, District Five, since he's no longer a member of the body?
We can amend to delete him.
Can I make a motion just to remove Will Diaz, District Five?
Second. Representative Agar? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Yeah, that carries. Mr. Diaz is having a rough time tonight, he got thrown off that. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, we'll take it to the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're finally here. Item number twenty. Consider and act upon any other matters presented to said meeting and which may be properly acted upon under the rules of the representative town meeting. Anybody have anything else they want to discuss tonight? Oh, sorry about that. Let's go back. Do you have changes? I hope not. Okay, let me get back to page one. All right, to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular monthly meeting held on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Wolk, seconded by Representative Myers. Are there any comments, amendments, changes? Representative Agar?
Jill Vergara for District Seven. I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes under item number four on the call. Reappointment of Nancy S. Billington to the Ethics Commission term July twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. In the summary of what the town attorney had said, it's inaccurate, the summary, so I transcribed what was actually said at the meeting, and I don't know if it's appropriate to just put that in. I didn't feel like it was my job to summarize it, so I'm, I'm wondering whether I should just put the transcribed comments into the minutes.
Is it long?
Not very, but because Representative Bateson hadn't heard the first answer that Attorney Baldwin gave, there's two paragraphs. I could give the first paragraph or both.
Mr. Bateson says he's good.
Okay, so this is the transcribed statement by the town attorney. The charter reference is accurate. Whether they can conduct any business or not without abiding by the charter language cited by Representative Vergara is a good question, and I don't think that there's any harm in postponing to try to get a full body or full membership on the body.
Do I have a second? Representative Gerber? Any comments? Take it to a vote. Amended minutes, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Representative Iacona, Representative Bateson?
I have one other amendment to the minutes to offer under the section where we discuss the explanatory text, which is item number six on the call. In my first statement, I didn't think that this accurately reflected what I said, so I also went back and listened to it. Instead of saying in that first sentence, "This body authorizes the town clerk to prepare explanatory text," I am proposing an amendment that replaces that with, "The Board of Selectmen mistakenly voted on this authorization." The RTM is the body vested with the power to write the explanatory text. We were nearly denied the ability to exercise that power.
Okay, do I have a second? Representative Georgiades? Any comments? Okay, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We got a lot of abstentions. That motion carries, twenty-seven zero ten. That amendment, so we'll vote on the amended language now for that. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the amended language passes. We'll take the minutes. Any other comments on the minutes? Nope. Okay, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor of the minutes? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Minutes pass as amended. Anything else? Because I'm going to call a motion to adjourn. Representative Havy, seconded by Representative Wolk. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. See you next month.